For our next panel, we will hear the perspective of three experts from the medical and treatment provider communities and their observations on synthetic cathinones. Our panelists are Dr. Heather Borick, Dr. Christopher Holsteg, and Dr. Darrell Inaba. Dr. Borick is an Assistant Professor of Emergency Medicine as well as the Associate Fellowship Director for Medical Toxicology at the University of Virginia School of Medicine. Dr. Borick's research areas include clinical toxicology and management of the critically ill patient. Dr. Borick received her Bachelor of Science in Chemistry from the University of Virginia in 2003 and her M.D. from the University of Connecticut School of Medicine in 2007. Thereafter, she completed an emergency medicine residency at the University of Virginia, obtained a public health certificate from the University of Virginia, and completed a medical toxicology fellowship at the Blue Ridge Poison Center. Dr. Holsteg is a professor of emergency medicine and pediatrics as well as the chief of the Division of Medical Toxicology at the University of Virginia School of Medicine. He also holds positions as the university's executive director of student health and as the medical director for the Blue Ridge Poison Center. His research focuses include clinical toxicology, substance abuse trends among students, and the emergence of new substances of abuse. Dr. Holsteg received his Bachelor of Science in Chemistry from Calvin College in 1988 and his M.D. from Wayne State University School of Medicine in 1993. Thereafter, he completed an emergency medicine residency at Butterworth Hospital and a fellowship in medical toxicology at Indiana University. Dr. Inaba is the Director of Clinical and Behavioral Health Sciences at the Addictions Recovery Center and the Director of Education and Training for CNS Productions, Inc., a company that creates substance abuse information media. He also holds instructing positions at the College of San Mateo and the University of California at San Francisco and is a consultant and instructor for the University of Utah School on Alcoholism and Other Drug Dependencies. Dr. Inaba is a certified pharmacist in the state of California and is a certified alcohol and drug counselor, III. Dr. Inaba received his undergraduate education at California State University Fresno from 1964 to 1967 and obtained his Ph.D. from the University of California, San Francisco, School of Pharmacy in 1971. Dr. Borick.
Thank you for the introduction. So, just wanted to make the point that Dr. Holsteg and I are both physicians, were double boarded in toxicology and emergency medicine, and so we're there on the ground, we're the ones that are actively managing these patients when we come into the hospital and following them throughout their course in the hospital. What I'd like to start with is going through a case to describe some of the clinical effects that we were seeing. This is a case that we had published in 2012 that really just exemplifies the effects that we were seeing of a specific cathinone known as MDPV. And in this case, this is the only substance that was identified, so the effects are purely from this substance. This was a case of a 25-year-old gentleman who had injected bath salts containing MDPV and was subsequently found running wildly throughout the neighborhood, foaming at the mouth, very agitated and combative. It took nine police officers to be able to bring him into the emergency department. When he arrived to the emergency department, he was again very agitated, combative, took multiple personnel to be able to even perform an initial assessment of him. His heart rate was 175 with the normal upper limit being 100, so significantly elevated, and his temperature was 106.3 degrees Fahrenheit. He was very ill at that time. He required multiple medications to be able to calm him down. He was immediately put on life support and required multiple sedating medications in order to continue to safely manage and evaluate him. Immediately on his arrival, he already showed signs of multi-organ injury, including injury to his liver, injury to his heart, injury to his kidneys. Those got progressively worse throughout his hospitalization. He went into full renal failure and needed to be placed on dialysis continuously. His liver failed. He had a heart attack and had reduced ability of his heart to pump throughout the hospitalization. He had significant signs of muscle injury, and in fact, his lab test that we checked for that was the highest I've ever seen in my clinical practice. He required hospitalization for 18 days, and even after discharge, he still needed to be on dialysis for a few weeks after that due to the injuries from this. We did extensive drug testing on him. These were send-out tests, not readily available at any hospitals, but we were able to get some specialized testing at the time, and MDPV was the only substance isolated from his system. And so I think what I just wanted to highlight with this case was really the multi-organ effects that it's causing. You know, from neurologic injury to cardiac injury, really every organ system was affected by this drug. The other thing is just the degree of agitation that we saw with him, requiring first responder personnel and putting them at risk for injury with a violent and agitated patient. And then, once he arrived to the hospital, there's a continued risk to healthcare providers, nursing staff, physicians, and all ancillary staff as well during his hospitalization until they were able to adequately control his behavior. His case took a lot of healthcare resources. He had started out at one of our community hospitals, and because of the degree of effects, he had to be transferred to a higher level of care where we could get all the consultants involved to be able to take care of him. He required a prolonged stay in the intensive care unit and, again, resources and costs associated with dialysis and the other treatments that he received. One of the things to note is the drug screens that are available in the hospital do not test for these substances, and so, as I mentioned, this required special send-out testing. And so, at the time, we are seeing these patients, we really don't know exactly what they took. All we know is we have an agitated patient who's overheated to the point of burning their cells and directly causing cellular injury. But it was not for a week or two that we had any test results back on what this gentleman actually took. And so, in real time, we had to treat kind of a stimulant, and that was all we knew at the time that it was some sort of stimulant, but not specifically what the substance was.
Thank you, Dr. Borick. I should have mentioned earlier for this panel, as I did for the earlier panel, we have a traffic light system. We'd ask you to try to keep your comments within your testimony, within about five minutes. When the yellow light shows, you have a minute. Dr. Holsteg?
Yeah, I'll be brief. What Dr. Borick depicts is what we saw over a time period in a large number of these cases. We published this case in part to exemplify what was going on and what others could expect. If you look at the data, data's difficult, right? With the clinical effects, what we saw when these came in, because we didn't always know because we couldn't do the analytics. In 2009, we saw zero. The Poison Center saw zero cases. 2010, we had four. Poison Centers, 304. 2011, we had 90. The Poison Centers reported 6,138. Those were ones of cases where they either we knew based on history they took these substances or we did analytics. With many of these, we couldn't because it's too costly to do analytics on these cases. Then it started to drop off when the laws went into effect. One was they were not telling us, so part of it's reporting bias because they're not going to say they're doing these substances if they're illegal, whereas before, they're very open about telling us about doing it. I will tell you, at the University of Virginia, though, and with our Poison Center, we had a six-month time period where I've never seen anything like it in my career, and I've been practicing over 20 years in a large cities. And I've seen cocaine, I've seen amphetamines for years, but I literally had a person in my ICU every other week, at least, who was on life support because of these agents. It's a challenging time for us. These are markedly agitated patients. The data does show, the clinical data, what we have, about 80% of these are exhibiting combative psychotic behavior. Puts my medical professionals certainly at risk, pre-hospital and outside of the hospital. The other thing that's a bit unique on these, and you can certainly see organ damage from other things, which you heard in the previous testimony, cocaine and amphetamines, but we saw a lot more of it with us, and I'm not sure why. I do not understand, and I still to this day don't understand, why so many of my patients had leakage of what they call troponin with the heart, which shows damage to heart cells, and it was actually a global hit. It was not a focal where the blood vessels will narrow or vasodisstrict like we see with some of amphetamines and cocaine. We actually saw this large leak of troponin, meaning many cells were damaged, and then what we describe as what is called a global hypokinesis where the entire heart is just slowly pumping, just not pumping well, not a focal area, including liver, kidneys, and other areas. If we were able to get them over and aggressively treat them, we could get them, and they did have recovery. But, again, these were exceedingly challenging time for us for about six months. You mentioned that I oversee student health now. That came in 2013. I've been at the university for some time. The reason they pulled me into student health administratively is we had a death associated with these, one of our top students. And we are working diligently to combat the issues of substance abuse in the collegiate population right now, which is a tremendous challenge, especially with the rapid emergence of some of these synthetics that come out, and certainly put a danger to our students because they come under names that are unassuming, they're kind of enticing, and we really don't have any data on these when they first come out, what they really do. And sadly, again, we've had quite a few of our collegiate population who have died from these. And so, from a clinical standpoint, very unique time for us, and toxicology for those of us who treated patients and in emergency medicine, when these agents were really prolific in society, we still see them, and we do have cases that will come up that we pretty much can pigeonhole that this is most likely one of the synthetic cathinones. But I'm glad to say that with the laws that have been in place, they have decreased somewhat.
Thank you, Dr. Holsteg. Dr. Inaba?
Yes. Thank you, Judge Pryor and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity, for letting me share my concerns and my experience with not just the cathinones, really, I'll speak on the cathinones because I was asked to, but it's a concern about this whole new psychoactive, new psychoactive substances, the whole synthetic drug situation, designer drug situation that's impacting America now with synthetic cannabinoids and also the synthetic opioids. In addition to your introductions, I also want to mention that I'm a lifetime fellow with the Haight-Ashbury Free Clinics where I spent 40 years treating thousands of addicts as well as we have something called Rock Medicine, in which we do event concerts and other event medicine where we go out and treat people who go to these things. And we've seen a number of overdoses and a number of toxic problems associated with these new psychoactive substances. In fact, I was there at the origin of Haight-Ashbury Free Clinics in 1967, and from the 1960s through the 1970s, I witnessed what some had described as the largest uncontrolled human drug experiment in the world. And it had its roots in the United States or had its epicenter in the United States, and really, its center was right in where I was working, the Haight-Ashbury Clinic, where synthetic drugs like PCP, SDP, 2CB nexus, a whole bunch of these new psychoactive substances started hitting the street. Many were unleashed with very little to no previous research or no previous knowledge of how they were going to affect a human being. So, in fact, the substance abusing subculture was used as human guinea pigs. These things were released with a theoretical psychoactive effects, and the people who took them were actually the test witnesses to tell us what they did, how toxic they were, what the dosage should be, how dangerous they were. And unfortunately, I had to witness a lot of tremendous tragedies in the past due to this experience. I think what we're now in is a much larger, I mean, these were rogue chemists and these were small-time operators, just street pharmacologists creating new substances. I think this current situation is a much more world situation, much larger operations involved, and I think it's a real danger to our society. The cathinones themselves are synthetic. I won't talk about the pharmacology or toxicology that you have experts here talking about, but I want to focus my talks pretty much on my clinical interactions with these individuals. As previously presented, these are real challenges to us in medicine and to the drug treatment field. Well, I should have mentioned, I'm also speaking as a member of the National Association of Alcohol and Drug Abuse Counselors, NADA, which has me to make public hearing on this as well. But these are real challenges because we don't know what we're seeing. We have toxic reactions at rock concerts and on the street in which we can do stat or emergency toxicology on, but they often come up negative because there's no standard, there's no analyte, there's no way for telling what these things are. So, we have to go on our clinical experiences and what we're seeing on hand in order to treat these individuals. Just an strange thing, my interactions are that these cathinones have a wide range of effects. They can go anywhere from mouth stimulation to extremely toxic, overwhelming effects where individuals almost turn like zombies, very blank stare, very dilated pupils, their mouths form oftentimes like Edward Monk with the screen, you know, round mouth features. They also have a vocalization which is very weird. Sometimes they start growling. Some of them are hyperactive, some of them are totally just non-mobile except they can move and act. So, these are real challenges, and sometimes we just have to guess that they're on their bath salts or under some sort of psychoactive substance when we're treating them and interacting with them. The treatment is very, very difficult, as mentioned previously. We see rambomiosis due to extreme hyperthermia. There is an extreme high blood temperature, body temperature. It goes up to the point that blood begins to coagulate. You get muscle dying off, it clugs up the kidneys, kidneys shut down, and we have to treat them. That's one of the clinical treatment concerns when people come in for bath salt treatment for addiction. We have to really monitor them more closely, watch their body temperature a lot, watch their body symptoms because they may have much more toxic effects than people just coming in for methamphetamine or for cocaine abuse. So, my program is a, pretty much, a medically, it goes up to what we call Level Point 3 Treatment in Oregon, 3.8 treatment, which means we do medically monitored treatment. We don't have the full hospital-based treatment. That's a 4.0 treatment system. But it gives us a real challenge, and we, as much as possible, have to refer a lot of these people to our medical emergency rooms, things like this where they have nothing but troubles in them. In terms of the treatment, oh, I'm overshot here, but in addiction treatment, they are a little bit more difficult to treat. They do have a lot of relapses. We can't monitor their urines because we can't find anything in their urines. They circumvent the drug court system, they circumvent our clinical interactions, and they offer us a lot more concerns in treatment. But we do manage them like methamphetamine addiction, and some of them are now combining their bath salts with the fentanyls and the opiates to do something called speedballing, and that's a new concern of ours. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Inaba. Questions?
I have a specific question about your case that you told us and then a general question that the panel can answer, but the first question is, did you have any understanding which you arrived at subsequently to his immediate treatment as to what his drug history was and what led him to take the drug that you've described? Did you find out anything about that?
So, a lot of times in these, we didn't, we did not, and that's very common in these cases. He was unable to participate in giving us any history because of how acutely ill he was. We had gotten some history from his girlfriend who said that he had injected these, but a lot of times, we don't know the history on these people. Sometimes we don't even know their names, and we have to enter them as a John Doe in our system when we're treating them.
But is there a pattern that you've seen with these drugs that there is some gateway to it? They've tried X, they've tried Y, and now they're into Z, into this? Is there a pattern or is it just random?
At the University of Virginia, psychiatry, again, that's about sampling size, right? And how big? But part of it, the two top things that came up when they sampled their patients who were coming to their addiction clinic on why they use these, one was to try a new high and the other was to beat drug screens.
To beat what?
Beat the drug screens.
Beat the drug screen?
Because beating the drug screen, and this is a huge problem in my practice also in regards to occupational medicine, too, because they're only due on the type of, the original night of five plus others, but you can't detect these. So, in occupational medicine, this is a huge problem for them right now because if nothing's detected, it worries the causality. But they, the internet has opened up Pandora's Box. Want to access the other thing is to learn about these things, to beat the drug screens and know that you can't find these unless something, of course, detrimental really occurs like in this case where we got a public health need to do testing for it.
Would I add to that? There's also, because the internet probably, or maybe in addition to it, these drugs are more available, strangely. They can get them easier and they're cheaper, and that's the other reason. They can get them cheaper than other street drugs, and that's what many of our clients start off, his profile might be. They are drug seekers, they are in the street drug using subculture. Most of these are amphetamine affection models or stimulant. They like stimulant drugs, and this is a natural progression to experiment with these drugs. They're available, they're cheaper, and if you're in any kind of legal situation or even if you're in treatment, that's our concern. They're in treatment, and this takes away our real scrutiny to monitor their progress in treatment.
I have a really quick question. Is there any, I know that you said that you couldn't really treat him for what he, how much, what he took or how much he had taken until a week later, but do you have any idea how much of what he took, he took to get to that effect, that kind of effect?
No.
Is it highly individualized? In other words, does it depend, X quantity will have this reaction with person A, that reaction, different reaction with person B? Some can tolerate it, some can obviously couldn't.
Yeah, I think the previous panel, the speaker had alluded to, it depends on the dose and it does depend on the person. There's probably factors we haven't figured out now, genetic factors or other things that would make some people more susceptible to the effects or more significant effects perhaps than another person, and so it is individual and a lot of.
Is there a benign effect? That is to say, is there some dosage, some potency, and some person who could take these drugs and just experience a quote "high" without experiencing these horrible, horrible effects? Or is the drug such that you take it and you're going to have this type of?
I think the deal is, it's the drugs. They're not just one. There's multitudes out there, and each one, just a simple modification of a molecule. On that substance creates a tremendous different profile on how that drug's going to affect the individual and how strong it's going to be, what its dosage is going to be. There are individual differences, there's these other things we talk about, but the individual drugs themselves, we find as they come out, you know, they come out every year is a new one hitting the street.
Is that what you're saying within the class of cathinones or do you mean cannabinoids, cannabinoids, the fentanyl? Like, if we were just looking at the cathinone category?
Looking at cathinones themselves, there's a big difference in the different potencies and different toxicity of cathinones. But then there's other new drugs that are not chemically cathinone, but maintain, I think, one of the testifiers originally talked about, I forget the term he used, well, the structure-activity relationship is what are we using? Once you figure out what it takes in certain atoms' health to be together, to create certain effects, you can create a whole tinker toy, a bunch of new drugs that aren't technically cathinones, but fit that structure-activity relationship to do the same thing. And so, there's new ones coming out that aren't even cathinones.
But then, how do you know? And I'm sorry to interrupt, but how do you know what that person took then?
So, in this case, we had sent out extensive testing to a specialized send-out lab and looked for extensive hallucinogenic compounds, amphetamine-like compounds, other cathinones. And at this point in time, a standard had been created for MDPV, and so it had come back positive.
Which is why we reported. And realize, it gets to be a challenge. As the others alluded to, it's a grand human experiment that's going out in society right now. If you look at chemical structures, the beta-ketonated substitution may be more so, but again, it's odd to me. I've been seeing cases of amphetamines, cocaine for years in my practice. They don't have the cellular destruction like this. And especially some of the cases that we've had with MDPV, methyloate, methadron, those are some of the ones that we really saw some problems with. And when you look at the literature, again, pretty hard to explain why during that time period, when it started to hit and then the laws came to effect, when we started to see a decline, many of us throughout the country who practice and take care of these patients saw a huge wave of people who came in with, again, multi-organ failure, not always associated with fever either. There appeared to be some direct cellular damage. Problem is, we cannot do these experiments on humans. We're not going to be able to give them these doses to see what effects they have. We don't have that data right now. And again, they're changing quickly because we saw Flaca Next with alpha PFP, which we saw similar effects with, too.
Could I ask you about addiction? Are these, because Dr. Inaba suggested these are also addictive. Is that your experience as well?
Yeah, they cause release of dopamine, which creates that positive reward feeling, and so there is addiction.
Have you had people who have repeated, who have come in with this horrible experience and then gone out and done it again?
Yes. If a drug is addiction, it, with the dopamine release in a subconscious level, really in the mesocortex, it creates, it hijacks the survival mechanism or an instinct in an individual. And people, the definition of addiction is continued use despite catastrophic consequences. So, no matter what happens, they go back and they'll use and they relapse, and that's one of our biggest challenges in treating addicts is the tendency to relapse.
In the previous testimony, there was discussion of comparing these to cocaine and methamphetamine and where within that continuum these might fit. In terms of dangerousness to the user, where would you all put these drugs on that continuum? More dangerous to the user than cocaine, more than meth, less?
It's all about dose, right? And we don't always know the dose and where damage occurs. But I will tell you, again, in clinical practice and what we've had, and I talked to my colleagues, we've never seen anything quite like this. And so, from a clinical perspective and what we saw, the people who are using these, either admitted to using them or that analytics show that they were using them, had unbelievable effects from these. Again, I see a lot of cocaine abusers, amphetamine abusers. They're not in my ICU like this. It's very rare to have them in my intensive care unit. They might come in the emergency department agitated, but they calm down and then we can discharge them. They're not in for 18 days like this. Now, yes, if you took a massive dose of cocaine, could you get there? And that's where you can get some of the discussions on, you know, what about dose? But again, there's something unique in these substances that we saw, too, that appear to just have some direct cellular damage that I've just never seen before with a drug of abuse.
If I could ask one follow-up related to that. You mentioned the combativeness in the violence. Do you see that more pronounced with these drugs than you do with people who come to the emergency room with cocaine or methamphetamine, or is it similar?
I would say you certainly can see that with cocaine. I think there are a number of cases out there that this is a predominant effect with these synthetic cathinones and seems to be the norm. I've seen a number of people who've done cocaine who maybe complain of some chest pain who are calm and cooperative, and, you know, close to 80% of the people that are using bath salts are combative. So, I would say it's a more predominant effect.
Thank you.
Just one question. You'd mentioned that some of the universities, hospitals were seeing similar effects. Are you able to say, is this nationwide, is this east coast, south? This was nationwide when it came out. So, when you look at 2011, the beginning of 2011 especially is when things really hit, and that was nationwide. Only a few of our colleagues had the analytical capabilities to be able to really determine what was going on, had very tight alignment. This changed for us at the University of Virginia. We hired an epidemiologist to work full-time so we could track this quicker for the state and also we're working much closer with our analytical colleagues at the Division of Consolidated Labs and others so that they, once we start recognizing something's changing in our patient population, we can get analytics done as quick as possible because they're going to have to back extrapolate to figure out what it is if it's a new substance.
Have you seen a higher incidence of this use as a result of, like, concerts where kids go and, maybe I have to ask that of enforcement, the enforcement panel, but I'm interested in your. I'm interested in your opinion.
So in the college population, tremendous concern by certainly our administration at the university and other universities. Our student drove up by bus to DC to a concert, which is where she then started to act abnormally, and by the time she made to the emergency department, she had cardiac arrest. At that time, there was a concert in New York, I'm trying to remember which one, where two others had died, where they actually had to stop the concert, where those two also had synthetic cathinones, as my understanding, based on the media reports, in their system. So, yes, for the youth, that's a big concern, that these are passed around. And again, you can do these substances, we saw every way, they were trying, they, they've, you know, they shoot them up, they snort them, they'll take them as a tablet, and some people were doing it rectally. So there's a number of different ways people were doing these, to try and see how was the best, you know, it could, what a kind of effect would they get from these substances, which we see with our drug abusers, but the tablets are what really worry me about the collegiate population, because they see that as a safer thing. And then they put names on them, you know, we know that's in Mali, for example, it used to be ecstasy, it's being found in there, but they put it on kind of unassuming names that our collegiate population don't have any idea what they just got into.
Concerts offer a huge sales opportunity for the traffickers of these drugs, to get new people interested, buy them at concerts, cheap prices, and we've seen clusters of these, when they appear, like Mali was supposed to be pure MDMA or ecstasy, but appeared at a concert and turned out to be one of the cathinone derivatives, it had several toxic effects, and that's how they find out how toxic these things are, at the dosage form they're selling it.
Dr. Anaba, can I ask you a question about when you were saying that now they're combining the chemical structures, so they're not pure cathinones, they're, so just in terms of staying ahead of this or thinking about what comes next, so if we were to figure out some kind of categorical approach that deals with cathinones, cannabinoids, fentanyl, you're saying there's an additional, there's a, there's, it's an endless amount of combinations that places them outside even those existing categories that chemists could have?
Yes, that's a scary part of this, but the thing is, you also have legitimate medications and legitimate products that are also within those categories, and that's what you have to, sort of, what is the intent here? It's interesting, the bath salts are oftentimes, they're not sold as jewelry cleaners, they're sold as plant food, they're sold as ladybug, I mean, they're sold as anything, but the giveaway for us is not for human consumption, very prominently on the labeled packages, you know, and that's a giveaway for people, this new kid on the block to shoot up or smoke up.
They poison them. What about that one?
So that's a concern we have for this compound. Yes, you can, like, right now, I think there are nine to 11 chemical families, not single chemical families, 11 chemical families used to make synthetic cannabinoid-like substances or things that act like marijuana. So, that's huge to try and keep on track of in terms of what you're suggesting here, but there is a structure-activity relationship that pharmacologists talk about in terms of knowing where the atoms have to be in certain places to do certain effects, and that might be a road to do it, but it also means it's going to incorporate a lot of other substances that might not be developed for people.
Thank you. We appreciate your presentations this morning, answers to our questions, and your written presentations as well. We're going to take a break and assemble back here at 11:00 to hear from our third panel. Thank you.